Play the call this meeting order. First on the list, the Board of Assessors, Ted Wesley, Tax Classician here.
The assessor board recommends a single rate taxpayer and the rate will be eighteen, eighteen, three thousand.
Whoa, that's quite a drop. Thank you.
Yeah, the whole town was revalued, so my taxes was way up, so yours get to go down.
Thank you.
Well, works for me.
Can I ask what the valuation was that you said is? Uh, we did it at the budget at a hundred, at thirty million dollars, so you probably made it higher than me. You, you know what that, that amount is?
Know exactly what that number is.
I do what you know.
I certainly love.
Thank you.
Okay. I think I have the details.
It's got some advantage.
Yes.
Any other questions? Or anything else from you guys or?
Well, you're set, works out.
I'm set.
You don't need us to vote or anything, do you?
No, you have to accept it.
Oh, you need us to vote, then? Okay, so I move that we accept the assessors recommended uh per thousand tax rate of eighteen twenty-one?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen dollars and eighteen cents per thousand dollars of value. I second it.
All in favor?
Uh, now we're done.
Great, thank you so much, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting it there, we got the agenda.
Thank you, Ken.
Through the minutes of the November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four select one.
I want to approve the minutes of the November twenty-six, twenty-three, select board meeting. I'll second that.
All in favor?
I.
We're done.
They didn't show up, I'm tired of letting it go.
Next, Broom Street Host Community Agreement for High Plains Farm Discussion.
So, um, I've given each of you a, um.
I was wrong back to you.
Well, we went back and I got David lawyer, sort of, and I said, take out the things that were, didn't want them to fall. And, you know, clean it up, and he said, yeah, that was just a completely generic uh agreement that was written to accommodate any host community for any kind of license, so we made it specific to our relationship. And, um, and we put in a few more words about uh things like if there's, if there's trouble, if it does, if their trucks do damage to, to Broom Street, they'll pay to fix it and and all of this, the whole host community agreement, one thing I learned in this process is that we can put whatever we want in there, but if the cannabis commission doesn't approve it, uh we're back at square one, we, basically, we have to do what they said.
Right.
Um, so it, that's, that's just a preamble. Um, I did talk to Chris Bruce this afternoon because he emailed me, he was having childcare issues. And, um, in that conversation, uh, he, he volunteered, he said, you know, I haven't been able to pay, fully pay off the taxes that were due yet. And he said last time that he had paid half of them or a little more than half of them. He said, but it is still my goal that it be done before December thirty-first, and the closer we get to December thirty-first, it does look like it's realistic goal. On your way out, you don't know what invoices are gonna get paid. So, uh, I told him that, because he has been waiting on this host community agreement to get the renewal of his uh license, um, I told him that I was gonna recommend to the select board that we go ahead and sign the agreement as it's been revised. But we won't give it to him, he won't be able to submit it to the cannabis commission until the pa- taxes are paid. And he was really very reasonable about it, he said at least three times, I, you know, I understand the select board's position on this, I don't think it's unreasonable at all, that's okay, I'll do my best to get it paid. So, any other, other questions, specific questions?
No. Any other questions out there?
Alright, so you have two copies, that's, that's the mark on them, these two are clean, I wouldn't put it dating.
Right.
But you could, it would, I guess you just have to sign them, so it doesn't matter whether the rest of us are here or not, but maybe as a board have to vote. I move that we accept the new HCA as presented at this meeting and um, that we withhold uh dating it and sharing it with uh twenty-seven Broom Street until they have fully paid their taxes. I second that.
All in favor?
I.
Any questions?
No.
Finance Committee.
We're ready. I'm here, Bob Baker from Lexington Street. Um, we wanted to talk in general about uh town revenue generation and how's grant activities are coordinated in town. And we're looking to increase uh information sharing between people uh who are involved in revenue generation, granting the town. Um, we're sent three documents, so one is the uh summary of uh the budget we passed at town meetings. Uh, there's copies on the back table if people need them. Uh, you've noticed on the uh, the second page is the tax rate and that has changed since the assessors, it's given to us a much higher value than of what our town real estate is worth. But there are a few things that I wanted to point out that are, are relevant, the first page uh of uh the uh summary, I circled three million, two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirteen cents, and that is the amount of expenses we have at the town, if you take off the MLPs, the, the MLP is a wash, what they bring in and what they expend it zeros out, so we talked about what all the other expenses are that we have on our budget for the town. That is a number of three million, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But that does not include all the money brought in grants from uh one-stop grants, from ARPA, from technology grants. But we really don't know how much that is, I've asked Paula a number of times and she's been busy, and I expect that she's busy, can't find what information. Uh, we've asked that information, uh, when we've gone out, when we go out to the departments for our new budget, we're gonna ask them what grants have you received, what you intend to apply for, which information we should know, we should have that as an addendum to our budget, so at the end of the year, we'll put our budget out, we tell people where we, where we received our extra money from.
Right, and what we was used for, or whatever, so people.
Yeah, and no, no one knows, the financial lady doesn't know.
Correct.
So, that's why I bring that number to your attention. If you go to the second page, I've circled, uh, two numbers at the top, about three hundred and four dollars, four hundred and seventy, three hundred and four thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. That's the amount of money we bring in from outside income. Okay, when we look at our revenue, when we do our budget, we are bringing in a little over three hundred thousand dollars in outside revenue, to fees, dog licenses, uh fines, whatever we get our money from, carry sheet. We're bringing in less than ten percent of what we have to pay, uh, to put our budget out, which is three million, two hundred thousand, we're bringing in three hundred and four thousand. Lot less than we should. And the other part of what we call revenue when we deal with the budget, that I have circled, that comes out to a hundred and forty, eight thousand, eight seventy, that's free cash and stabilization, that's our money, it, free cash is what we did spend last year and stabilization is our savings account. So, uh, if you look at what we bring in versus what we spend, um, we look at revenue, we need revenue, but that's why we're talking about grants. And out there, try to coordinate the grant process and see if we can bring in more money for activities, infrastructure needs uh outside of what we're able to generate through uh outside revenue. Um, I just brought another sheet for everybody and it's a, a list of stabilization. And I just want you to see what historically stabilization is looked out, looked at over the past five years, um. Right now, uh, twenty twenty-five, we have about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, that's estimated, we, we put out eighty thousand for Prospect Street and seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars for uh doing the parking lot at the uh, the fire station. So, when we do our budget this year, we're gonna have to look and put some more money into stabilization, a hundred thousand dollars, less than we were uh five years ago. And, uh, you know, it's nice to have a bit of a bank account if we can.
Yeah, I lost everything going up too, so that kind of.
I understand, I wanted everybody to show what, whatever accounts look like, and that's why I put that out.
Where, how does the stabilization fund get replenished, is it by vote at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
It, it's uh, put into the budget.
Okay.
So, in the past year, we put in uh fifty thousand dollars a year for the past few years for the fire truck.
But that was for, that was a, you're, you're lumping all of the stabilization funds together here?
Uh, no, if you look down the bottom, I'm sorry, uh, there's a list of what our current other balances are.
Oh, I see.
Five thousand dollars for the cruiser, and uh amazingly, the uh broadband has two hundred and fifty-nine thousand plus in stabilization. So, I hope at some point they stabilize themselves enough that some of the money coming in can help support
stuff in town.
Mutual functions in town that they're allowed to be able to pay for.
There are legalities around that because they're a separate, they're publicly, public utility that's regulated separately. And I know that, that Kimberly's goal is to keep the stabilization, I thought it was over three hun- she wants to get it up to three hundred thousand, I think.
Well, we're close.
So that because she wants it to be able to cover any extraordinary expenses to that infrastructure in the event of a catastrophic weather event or a failure of some expensive piece of equipment that has to be replaced. Um, and I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head what her plan for, once she reaches that threshold, if their retained earnings goes higher than that, um, she had a plan for it, I'm, I'm blanking out right now.
I'd like to hear about, talk about it.
Yeah.
At a certain point, there are some things that they can do and pay for that benefit them, that might be able
That also benefits.
Originally benefits the town.
Exactly.
So, that's a conversation to be had, but I just wanted everybody to know how much money there is in, in these accounts that it's got. Okay, so, the next thing that I sent you was a letter that was prepared, uh, and I have a summary of that, so you can read it later if you will. Like essentially, what we're doing is we're asking, how can the town take advantage of seasonal grant opportunities that help our budgetary infrastructure needs and priorities? Um, as I said before, this money just, uh, does not, I'm sorry. How, how can the town take advantage of grant opportunities that help budgetary infrastructure priorities, and it does not preclude boards and committees from continuing to involve themselves in the grant process, okay, that they, they really need to be involved. Um, we don't communicate with each other and, uh, I never heard of our, in finance committee, uh, maybe I didn't attend the uh select board meetings, but.
Cause that was federal money.
And, and, and it's off the top, and there are grants that have been applied for that, that we don't know about, so we gotta find a way so that when people are applying for grants, when money is coming in, that we can somehow post it publicly so that the, the, the boards that need to know and the citizens, citizenry can know. Um, we need to sit down, we need to achieve consensus and set goals and priorities for fundraising. Um, it, it's been suggested that maybe we have an all boards meeting or all grants meeting to sit down and talk about it at some point.
Um, at some point soon.
At some point soon. Um, we need to find ways to reach grants, uh, find out what's available, we're leaving money on the table. Um, about three weeks ago, Delilah and Peg Keller and I met with Dave Christopoulos from CDC, and he generously offered us the opportunity to use their grant database to look up grants, to look at grants, we don't have a mechanism to do it, but we have the invitation, the opportunity to be able to, uh, take advantage of their resource. There are probably grants that we don't know about, things that we could use, and if there aren't, it doesn't hurt for looking, uh, but if there are and we can apply for them, it would certainly help pay off things, a couple of years ago, we put money paid for Scott packs for the fire department, you know, maybe there are grants for that stuff, the police department, Dean's a cruiser, or say, so they say, you know, maybe there's some money here, there's federal money that we don't know about, so that, I think, might be able to help. Um, we need to communicate better, uh, past multiple, multiple departments have competed for the same grant, fire and police did a while ago.
Highway and some others too.
Highway had getting one-stop for a while, and Peter LePointe told me that, um, uh, Buildings is interested in one-stop grants. We can only get one per year, you know, we have to talk about what our priorities, uh, maybe highways one year, buildings the next, uh, I, I don't know. We have to be able to discuss those things. Um, we need to be able to track and report on grant activity, and I don't think it has to be onerous, I think it'd be as simple as a, uh, very small database that can be kept on the website. Um, there's not a lot of fields that need to be filled in, and if you had one that, uh, allowed comments, you could keep people abreast of what position you're at, thinking of applying for grant, having applied for grant, talking, sweating about the grant, uh, had been, uh, awarded, et cetera, et cetera, and that way anybody who cares about grants in town has the opportunity to look and see. Now, that's a to be determined, it needs to be worked out, but we do need to communicate with each other what everybody else is doing. Um, there's opportunities to partner with other towns, I think, uh, Energy is partnering with Wilbraham through PVPC for an energy grant, do I remember that, in the discussion?
I think so.
They're cooperating on that, they had a guy with them about two months ago.
Yeah.
There, there might be other opportunities, that can.
That's good, it hasn't been, um, granted yet.
No, but it's in process and we're actively trying to get involved. We wanna know about where we can actively try to get involved. Um, PVC, PC would know, of course, hometown CDC might know.
Clarify your we, is it we, the town?
We the town.
Finance committee?
No, we, we the town.
Okay.
We the town, thank you. Um, there are a few outcomes we'd like to see as a result of discussions, uh, one, as I said before, was getting together as an all board and all grants committee to have a colloquium, if you will, to talk about what our reasons are, what we're looking at for future grants and how we might be able to work together. Uh, as I just said, a database that, uh, we could use, uh, another database to keep facts and figures, that when you put a grant and they wanna know about your town, they wanna an area, a lot of that stuff can get reused over and over and over.
Boilerplate.
Gotta be able to keep that and have a repository where people know that, that it's, they're gonna do it each time. Um, you know, supportive of a centralized way, uh, the town can coordinate and communicate grants, uh, very simple database. The board meeting, uh, another thing that was suggested was a town policy requiring the select board to either approve or maybe be notified that a grant is in progress. There might be grants that are on fast track and you can't reach, uh, and vote on it, maybe it's a matter of notification that you approve rather than have a formal vote, but there has to be a way the select board knows what's going on. Um, the last thing is there are certain responsibilities for different steps in the grant process and application. And Delilah put together this grid, and can you address that, uh, online, Delilah?
Sure, hey, everyone, this is Delilah Madison, Omquist, uh, Summit Street. I essentially, I had, um, a few conversations with, um, Kimberly Longy, who was the, um, previous chair of our grant writing committee that we had, um, from conversations with the finance committee as well, um, looking at a couple of uh job descriptions online and, um, uh, that are, uh, uh, plainfield, um, staff job descriptions and trying to find anywhere where we had listed, um, things that required, um, that they're, the different responsibilities for people, um, that we need to have done in order to be able to successfully submit um, and execute grants. Um, and essentially, the grid was, I, it was intended to just be a place to understand if the responsibilities are being handled by someone, um, and once we had those, uh, that understanding who it was being handled by, at least being able to share that out with people so they know, or if there's something that's not being handled that needs to be handled, um, making sure that we, uh, as a town can identify um, who might be able to provide that support. Um, I think Bob has listed a number of things that are potential solutions for some of the responsibilities that are outlined here. Um, but it could be possibly used as a guide for conversations to talk about, um, these are the things we know we need in order to secure grants successfully and to execute it, um, successfully and wanting just to make sure that people are aware of, um, if there's any gaps that we have that are preventing us from being able to do so. Um, I don't think there's anything else that I needed to say about it, I think Bob has gone through a number of the different responsibilities that were in there, from, um, tracking, uh, research, coordination, writing, submitting the, um, proposals, and then there's other things about, you know, ensuring we stay in alignment, um, with the town priorities and needs. Uh, but I think Bob has covered most of what the needs are, um, and potential solutions for addressing them. Was there anything else, Bob, that you wanted me to go through?
If you have a question, and I wonder if there's questions, uh, cause I've thought through what I had, and Delilah, over her part.
Just have one thought, and where we keep saying, you know, coordination, et cetera, I think there ought to be, like, two or three points along the way where if a committee, an individual, a group, whatever's packed the grant, has to bring it to the, to a public meeting of some persuasion. And it would be certainly that, you know, we've identified this grant, this is the priority it fills, this is why we think it's valuable, and so we wanna apply for this grant, or we're going to apply for this grant. So that people have an opportu- that, that would help, I think, to keep people focused on what are the priorities and goals of the town that you will have had a conversation about before, right, and so that that can get aired, and then once the grant is submitted, it needs to be shared probably in some central file, maybe it's on the website, maybe it's in town hall, I don't know, but, um, because that could be useful to people writing future grants, to go back and look at one that was written before. And then, when they get the grant or not, that needs to be reported on. Um, I don't, I, I don't know what my fellow select board members think, at one point, we were thinking that if the select board had to approve any grant that was being written on behalf of the town or for the benefit of the town, that the select board ought to have final approval before that goes forward. But that could be a big roadblock, Ed had something to say on that one.
Well, my, my old grant's way back, always had to put it, circle that, sign it before they're gonna submit, that's our application.
Right.
And we lost grants, we find out, we have maybe twenty days to submit, and it has to be done pretty fast, how it works today.
Yes, same thing.
Yeah, sometimes you gotta.
Well, they don't release, they don't announce a grant or release the, the application until about maybe a month, six weeks at most before, before the application.
Twenty days.
Yeah, it, it could be less.
Probably had a waiver that she had to get in in what, seven days, um, why would know the waiver for?
The school bus, or?
Yeah, there was no leave time.
Yeah.
Right, which is the way a lot of grants.
Some of the things are hard to get proper, and as the select board.
That's why I said approve or be notified of, because there's some times it goes so fast that you, you, you wanna know, um, but you don't have a meeting where you can officially vote on it.
Sure, you can always call a special meeting.
Yeah, I guess you could, yeah.
It can be a single purpose meeting, and it doesn't have to be long and all that, but I, I do, I think that if we have to sign the application, that's what the grant-making entity requires, then it has to be in a public meeting. I mean, we have to discuss it in a public meeting.
Well, you've talked to me even before that, that to give people approval to pursue it, that this is in the town's interest and we'd like you to go forward with it.
See, we might be the ones that convene and orchestrate a conversation and I would probably err on the side of going with whatever the town people's con- consensus is.
But most grants are for benefit of the town, anyway, we've sold them, but anyhow, it's open to discussion that at what point the select board gets involved and how, but there should be some mechanism where the select board is involved, uh, in my.
I think, I think more than one place, from what I understand, that the select board is always not involved when they sign the contract to accept the money.
Yes, I.
And, so that, but it, you know, I, I think there are a lot of different types of grants, so we have to put that into the equation. There are grants where we have to have matching funds, which we can't afford, so those grants are, are off the table. Unless, you know, there's the municipal, um, vulnerability grant that I recently attended, um, a conversation with state rev about, and, um, it could pay for all of the culverts that are gonna get replaced in town next year. And that's because we, um, the energy committee has already applied to be part of that program. And, um, they, you can apply for those grants anytime, there's no like, it has to be done within a month or we just put it in anytime, and, um, we've already gotten two grants from that same funding for previous roadwork, some on of the OXFO and some culvert work. Um, and we can, they told us that we can do it in small pieces, large pieces, whatever's most convenient for us to manage.
What we need, what we need.
At the time, so that kind of grant should be done like yesterday.
Automatically, yeah.
And the matching funds used to be ten percent, but now they are offering even less than that, especially for communities like ours, where, that we don't really have a lot of funds. So, it's like a no-brainer, go for it. Um, but the kinds of grants where they're federal, there's a lot more regulation, uh, the matching funds don't work, you know, those kind of issues and the timeline um, could all be things that are difficult to manage in, you know, making a system that works so that everybody knows what's going on, I'm just saying, I'm not disagreeing at all, that I think, um, there needs to be better communication and transparency about what committees are doing and how they wanna help the town. And I think that, you know, starting maybe with a database, and if anybody in town thinks, oh, I wanna apply for this, then they just somehow submit that information into a central location. then they just somehow submit that information into a central location. I'm considering this. This is the energy committee and we're considering this grant. And these are the terms. And, you know, maybe put in, this is when we have to apply, and this is the deadline. And the, whenever something is put in for the first time, then maybe the select board gets a notification that, oh, somebody wants, has an interest in this. So everybody's radar is on it. And we could have an all committee meeting that, you know, sort of outlines how that process would work.
What if we had a standing agenda item for the select board that was grants report? Just like we have every, every meeting, we approve minutes. We can have.
Be like six months or something, I mean.
No, we can, because they're, they come up all throughout the year.
Throughout the year in the town.
Here, what I had in mind, it, it seems to me that a lot of this stuff is, is pretty simple, and it's a matter of eight or 10 data points. The, the name of the grant, the granting agency, the amount, the date, the, the status, is it pre-application, is it an application, has it been granted, has it been administered to?
They have a pull down menu for that.
Yeah, I mean, you can make an update based like that and access if you know how to do it. It would be a fairly easy thing to do, and you could keep it on the web.
Well, it could also be just a form that people fill out on the website that goes on, that the data goes into a database.
And then at each meeting, we get a printout, a report from that database, and we review it in a public forum.
Monitor it, whatever.
And if it were on the web, you could look at it anytime you wanted to see what people are doing in town for grants, as could other people beside town officials.
My life experience is that when people have to go to the web to find out information, that probably needs to be translated into, you're going to have to push it out to them.
Can I jump in for a quick second? Is that, it's Delilah. Hey, is that okay? I've been trying to raise my hand for a little while, so I don't know how to do it otherwise, other than jumping in. Okay, thank you. So there were a few things said, and one of them is about having like public places, two or three along the way where committees can bring details about the grants they're applying to, to a public meeting. Most of the committees have their own meeting, correct? So are you talking about if they're just discussing them at their meeting, it's a matter of their public record there? That's one place at least where they're discussing them? Another question that I had, I hear you all talking about a database, and I, I am curious if we feel like we're jumping to solutions before getting a chance to have that all boards and committees conversation that we are, we're recommending? Because it might be that it's easier to just send a note to someone and then that person can fill it out versus trying to learn a database, or who knows? I don't know what the, it might be, but it, it'd be interesting to hear directly from multiple committees about what would be the easiest way for us to capture this information in addition to them coming in front of the select board. And then, another thing that I heard in the conversation, conversations that I had was that, you know, there does need to be active engagement from the select board, or at least some of the members, and that sometimes letters, letters of recommendation are needed. Sometime, right? So it's, there's, in addition to just coming to the select board to say, hey, we're interested in moving this forward for some of the more complex grants, there's actually an active role that the select board sometimes has to play, or, you know, someone would need to work on behalf of the select board to get letters of recommendations in. So I feel like there's just.
I just clarify what you were just saying, though, it's not just letters, it's letters of recommendation from our legislators. Or intervention.
Right, that's right.
Intervention from our representatives and our senator.
Correct.
At state, if it's a state grant. And it could be from federal representatives and senators, if it's a federal grant. I don't know.
And oftentimes.
I'm just saying, because Delilah and I had that conversation, and she was saying that often those people will respond more quickly or at all to a select board member as opposed to just a committee chair or a towns person.
And we, and we, I don't know that we want, you know, if we do find three active grants going on and we want to apply for all of them, I don't know that we want three different committee chairs reaching out to the same representatives. And we might want one person responsible for getting the letters of recommendation for those three different grants and needs to know about it. So I know we're saying that, I think there is a simplified piece to things, and I want us to keep things as simple as possible and not create too much process. But it would be great to talk, to have them brought a bigger discussion. And I think one of our biggest asks was, can we get that discussion going sooner than later so we can understand all these different pieces and make sure there's like appropriate people responsible for them?
I would agree with that, too. I think I was putting out sort of suggestions and things that might be, but it really does need to be a product, I think, as to how the process should work.
And I agree with that. I was just sort of saying that I think all of these suggestions for how to manage it are good ideas. And, you know, starting places to get all the boards together and committees get everybody's input.
So how do we?
Work on the same page.
Certain grants are only for certain departments. Like police department, it's a grant, it only went for private police department. Fire department is saying, over here it's not high, fifty to sixty grants, we've got them all. Commercial CDC, of course.
But that may be the case, but the, but the finance committee and the rest of the town still ought to know that they're doing that.
They should know, it was all signed, that's what means.
But how many of our six hundred and thirty-three citizens are here with us tonight?
Eighteen minutes.
That just shows their interest.
It's in the minutes.
Yeah. You're an extraordinary citizen, Ed, in that you actually read the minutes.
And you've been involved forever.
Yeah.
I have nothing more to add, if, unless, unless questions.
So the only thing I would say is, I was thinking, because we had, in the finance committee, we had discussed the notion of convening another all boards and committees meeting, and I was thinking late January, early February, well, maybe, maybe after January thirty-first, because that's when budgets are due, and then schedule it for like the first two weeks of February.
We've asked on the budget sheet for people to indicate their grants received and grants planned. So that would be a good idea after the budgets are.
Right, right. But, so I will reach out to chief chair and see if we can use the community room, the Dennis Thatcher community room. And we'll see what, we'll see where we go from there. We'll look at it. I will avoid Thursday nights, because that's when the police are using that room. I mean, the fire department is using that room. But I just wanted some guidance, because frankly, if we're going to do that, we ought to, I ought to start trying to get that organized now.
Would there be anything you wanted to add from what we've discussed?
No, I think, I think fundamentally, that's where we're at, is an all boards meeting, but focused on this particular issue, and, you know, maybe there might be something else you want to add, but that might take up all the time. We, we thought it was successful to have the all boards meeting. You know, without a town administrator, it makes a lot of sense to just continue the main reports together a couple of times a year instead, so that we just stay aware of what we all do. So we don't step on each other's toes, or, you know, try and do the same thing and, and not even know someone else is doing the same thing.
I think it should be every four months, three times a year.
It's a way for us to be our own town administration as a group.
Yeah, definitely.
And I, you know, I'll say this again, I'm hoping that the website will be a platform for committees to post more about what they're doing, what their projects are, what their interests are, and be, you know, specific. This is what we've gotten done, this is what we hope to get done. And, you know, then all of us, and maybe even other residents in town will be more informed, but also maybe more interested and participate and excited to get involved.
And it will make the committee members' life easier, because that will be the backbone of their annual reports and make it much easier to write, so they can get it done on time.
And special thanks to all the Plainfielders here today. I mean, yeah, there's not a lot of us, but there are some of us, so way to go if we are here.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine of us.
What percentage is that?
Does that include, does that include us on the phone? There's four of us on the.
Yeah, it's only you and Jerry Little on the phone.
I, there's five, but I don't see.
Oh, I don't know who the other people are.
Ah, there we go. Yeah, I still have to figure out how I can know everybody who's on. Ah, there's Janie, yeah.
Uh huh, okay, so there, there are more. I didn't realize that. I didn't know there were people not, that we weren't seeing.
Same, Bob.
You can keep up here somewhere, fuck, you're.
It should, yeah, well.
We'll get there someday.
Wait, Andy, have you seen?
Yeah.
I've got to get the TV higher.
Maybe you got a long, uh, the TV so that it can be.
Side over.
Right.
Thank you.
Floyd Board to vote on renewing Pub 116 liquor license, pending inspection certificate, and to sign seasonal population form.
Rob sent me an email that he did the fire inspection and it passed, but he didn't know that typically the building inspector does his inspection when the fire inspection is done, and then they sign one document. So I don't have this signed document. They also haven't talked to the building inspector to see that portion of it passed.
So do we have to defer this vote? Because we don't know if those inspections.
I think the last time, I think last year what we did was, we voted but said pending that their inspection certificate is received by December. Because last year, it wasn't similar, but I think because they were getting the alteration of premises thing, that there was a holdup with the, they didn't pass their inspection. Charlie did pass something to do with what the building part that they were.
Working on renovations, yeah.
But I brought everything. But, and it was okay to say what we said last year, which was pending.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm a little confused, though, because does the permit for their expanded sort of like restaurant area, is that a condition of them being in space? It's not.
It has to do with the license.
Yeah.
With the license, not for them.
They have to pass the building inspection, that the renovations were up to code. And then, they have to, the fire has, the fire department has to inspect it and make sure that it meets the fire code. And then, they have to get their liquor license renewed on a manual basis. Are those the only three things that have to happen?
Well, so the liquor license is the one that's through the state, and then there's a separate one, like the, the.
Oh, a license to operate. Business, for business license.
And then there's also, which I wasn't aware, there's also a food license, which is the bigger one, not bigger, it's this size, but I don't have that one, but you see. But I have the yellow one, and the obligation for liquor license through the state.
And do all of us need to sign that? All of them? Okay, so it sounds like we're going to have to come into the town offices at some point once all of these papers have been assembled, to sign this anyway.
I, well, I think the only one, because the only one I don't have with me is the food one, and that's the only one that they haven't paid for, which is fifteen dollars. And then they, they gave me a check for the liquor license and the liquor operation one.
So we're contemplating signing all of these tonight, except for the food one?
Yeah.
And. Okay.
And then pending the, they passed the fire inspection, but I don't have the signed certificate from Rob and Rob.
Will believe you.
So, and then one other thing is the seasonal population form.
What is that? I don't understand that.
So the state requires that we estimate what the population of the town will be for the summer, because I think it goes up in the summer.
Summer people.
So they, this form is also part of their application. And then I think that you, you have to vote on the estimation of that.
Estimated as seven hundred and thirty people during the summertime.
Cool, hundred more people here.
So we gotta vote on.
Oh, I move that we sign all the forms that Shannon brought tonight, which is, I believe I have this right, the estimate of summer population, the town license to operate a business in Plainfield, and the liquor license application?
Yes. And then, by December thirty-first, I will make the food license, which is made on a type record. I think I can make it out in the FBI for that. I will make that.
Keep them coming.
Okay.
Oh, yes, well.
Yeah, you said you moved.
Moved.
I second.
All in favor?
I, I was worried, we weren't going to go there.
That one.
Shannon?
Thank you. And then, then you're the only one that signs this one, and then everybody signs this one.
So you're dealing with the sign as well?
We all sign this one.
Oh, okay.
Next, the ads out of repair licenses be signed by select board.
No, no, that's too sketchy.
Let's go.
I move if we sign ads, business license.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
And then I also have Central Farm and Marona.
Sounds a wonder.
I knew I dropped it off.
Do we sign more than one copy of these?
No, just, just the yellow one.
There's, there's two copies of it, though.
Oh, and it has two of them.
And it has two.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess you're so cool. Okay.
So.
No, she's.
And this one, this other one is still available, then, if you guys.
Central Farm Garage.
This goes back to Shannon. Are you here?
Oh, he's a carpenter. Yeah, he's a guy, and yeah, he's been there a while. Sign that ad, I think that's like. And pretty much.
Shannon, did you sign this?
No, I don't think.
Oh, maybe that's just something you're sitting.
I don't think they're interested, used to.
No, I think the only way.
Or she's the one leg that's shorter than the other.
Yeah, yeah, it's true. Yeah, it's pretty close. Yeah, okay, we have to.
Any other questions?
Anybody? Don't want?
Me?
Give them all to the parents.
Oh, I move we adjourn this meeting.
I seconded it.
All in favor?
I.
Oh, were you all not going to talk about the email about the sustainability study?
Some research analysis from Mary Nash about two districts. It's a new analysis from Mary Nash about two district, eight town sustainability study update.
Oh, okay. I'll I'll learn more about it next time.
Yeah, I'll read it. I'll read it. We'll talk about it next meeting.
Thank you. Thanks, y'all, for everything.
This is, I signed that. Oh, did you come get his dumpster yet, Ed?
Did you sign it all?
No.